Time is five o'clock. I'd like to call a meeting to order. Lisa, could we have a roll call, please?
Director Satter?
Here.
Director Rice?
Here.
Director Crowe-Sinema?
Here.
Director Laffey?
Here.
Director Casey?
Here.
Board chair, Ron?
Here. Okay, meeting's called to order. We have a quorum. Item number two is public comment. Anybody who wishes to address the board, state your name and your purpose for addressing.
Good evening. My name is Adam Lance, and I'm here today to talk to you about superintendent visiting the city council discussing bus garage. Good evening, school board directors and fellow citizens of Chisholm. My name is Adam Lance, and I'm here tonight to speak to the board of direction. Your superintendent brought it to the city council in their last working session. This is regarding the school perks in the property in 6th First Street Southeast. Mr. Norman asked if the council would be open to rezoning this property so the school could use it as a bus garage and office space. After two years, meeting, discussing, and working with consultants, residents, businesses, school administration, city boards, city chamber, city staff, and elected officials, one of the main points was to focus on the development of our downtown. This property, as part of our comprehensive plan, was just rezoned from industrial to retail, so it better fit with the vision of the city's future. I'll touch on one statement Mr. Norman made during our meeting regarding my short-term memory. It is true that the city attempted to purchase this property. However, we had plans of a short-term solution to a short-term problem, and we are losing storage for space for seasonal equipment while we build our public safety building. The office space would have been offered up for lease to private business, and as soon as we were able to get our equipment out, we would have packaged the whole property up and advertised it to a developer for future economic development, which would bolster our downtown. We are landlocked in this community, and we need to utilize the properties we have to the best use possible use. Everything that I've been involved in since becoming an elected official just over four years ago tells me that it would be irresponsible for the school district to purchase any property that is currently on the tax roll, especially since we just passed a $32 million referendum that is solely the responsibility of those who pay property taxes. Taking anything off the tax roll only increases the burden on those in our community. Mr. Norman had been in talks with Larry Fullstead regarding putting a building up next to our public worksite, an option that wouldn't work for funding unless the school owned the property. Mr. Norman said that he thought that was a deal breaker for the city, so he didn't pursue that option further. I'm here to tell you that the city would sell you that parcel for a dollar. Speaking of public, of building sites, there are two options readily available. The Industrial Park and where the Von Steffens' route currently sits. Both properties are currently not on the tax roll. Since the referendum was passed, the school now needs eight more office spaces and needs housing for their equipment. I would say that your previous plan is no longer adequate for your needs, and the design is now flawed. I would hope this plan will be revisited before a decision is made that would be devastating to our community. Or I would say you need to find a way to utilize what you currently have and make the best of the situation. Either way, this referendum was offered to us as a way to consolidate sites. Now with all the shovel on the ground, your superintendent is saying you need to purchase a third property for expansion, not only for equipment, but office space as well. Just because other schools are putting some staff remote does not mean that it's the right option. As a matter of fact, I think anyone with any community development experience would say that the city and school districts should own as little property as possible. The next option for the landowner or for the superintendent is to approach the planning and zoning board. I'm here to request that the school board doesn't let it go that far and direct the superintendent to search out other options. I would ask if any school board members are in doubt, please contact someone on the EDA, planning and zoning board, or anyone at all with community development background for advice. I'm quite certain you won't find anyone that will say this is an appropriate use of that property. I apologize for not making eye contact. I know your time is valuable, so I was trying to read what I wrote. No matter what, we are in this together. The city, the school, the citizens, you have failing infrastructure, we have failing infrastructure. We need money in this community. Taking an $8,000 property tax business location off the tax roll is not the way to start. You know, we need to work together. We need a plan. Anyone in here can see our comprehensive plan. It starts at the lake and works its way all the way up to the highway. We are looking to create a vision of our downtown which expands all the way up to the highway to future development and to bring businesses in. We have to show people and business that we are open-minded, we are progressive, and that we have a focus and a vision for what we plan to develop in the future. And I think taking the easy option that is before you, that was brought to us, is not the appropriate one. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number three, recognition of guests and visitors, and we've already had that. So, item number four is to approve the agenda. We have no changes to the agenda. I am en route to motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Danielle, support by Shelley. Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is reports versus superintendent Norman.
Actually, I have a long list this time. So, recently I applied for a small schools grant. It's just under $10,000. What I applied for was to replace and add manipulatives for our STEM lab. Some of these items are consumables, and annually you need to replace some of these. And then there's also some areas of expansion that we can do to them, so the connects items, we could use multiples of. So, I literally just applied last week. There's no real timetable on it, so we'll wait and see. But I did throw that out there for us to help us replace some of those things and enhance the lab itself. Speaking of labs, the Smart TV studio, Teresa Allen and I went over to Lake Country Power in Cohasset about two weeks ago, and we presented to around two dozen folks on their board, and their panel shared that they're gonna award a total of $400,000 to 20 finalists. And these finalists will be shared at the end of the month at their next board meeting. So, we won't know anything until the end of February. I believe they have their meeting on the last day of the month or the first day of the following month. It was quite an impressive place. If you haven't been there, it's a beautiful facility. This is their first year of doing this. One of the things that was a takeaway is that I introduced to them was, no matter how this rolls out, I'd encourage them to go to the sites and see these things in action because they're pretty powerful things, because I got to see what some of the others were presenting as well, and there was some neat stuff there. I also encourage them to come to our soup group meetings for '27, '28, where they can get to a larger audience to discuss. You have to be a member of Lake Country Power to apply. So, I should know more by the end of the month. I reached out to Jeff Anderson from the Costin Group. He shared that the 5 cent per ton tachytonic tax bill will be introduced either at the state level at the end of this week or next. I'm unsure if I'll be asked to go down and speak again at the committee level. Last time I had less than a school day's notice. I got the call and said we need to come down here. So, I'll let you know if and when that takes place, but he felt it should be introduced shortly. We had an interview committee of six team members to interview for our school finance and business manager positions that were open. We are in the process of background checks, and we have made tentative offers and have acceptance pending paperwork and background checks. And then we would need to finalize a contract. We're hoping to have this information to the board by our next meeting or at the latest at the meeting in fall. Gensa just wrapped up their feedback sessions of all the stakeholders. We'll be doing three site visits in the upcoming weeks. We'll be going to the Hibbing Early Childhood Center with a group of folks from the Von, Grand Rapids Elementary, and at the same time, a group of us are going to visit their bus barn to see what they did there, and then an elementary school at Rockridge. Regarding the mayor's recent comments, I did meet with the city council last week during their working session, discussed with them a potential option for a school bus barn. As you can tell, it was not well received, but we had to do our due diligence to see what options are within the city limits. Currently, there's only two other buildings that are outside the city limits that could fit the capacity of our buses. I shared in that meeting that it would be not good optics if we had to explore options outside of our city limits. I know he shared that they'd be willing to offer us a parcel in the Industrial Park. That's all well and good, but that's two to three times the amount of money that it would cost if we rehabbed a facility in town. I am planning on going to the March 6 zoning commission meeting to discuss this potential option. This was a recent rezoning of this property. This property had not been retail. It had been public use, and that's what I would ask that they turn it back into. When he mentioned the fact about office spaces, and what's happened since we started working with Ingenza is we have added multiple mental health resources for students through North Homes, and we're going to expand it hopefully in the near future to a day treatment program. We have added a facilities and grounds coordinator. We have added Indian Ed. We're about to add finance and business manager personnel. We also have two check and connect coordinators, and I did request a third if any additional federal funding came available on that. So, we have a number of expanded needs, including Hibbing's director that we didn't have before. That footprint equaled over 7,000 square feet of adding those additional office spaces, which equated to over $3 million. And so, those monies were not in the original plan when we started this planning phase. We've also added programs like robotics, esports, and things that we're gonna try our best to retrofit, but those were also additions to any planning we did when we first did our square foot stamp. So, when he's referencing those things, I just wanted to make you aware that's where the conversation has gone. Any questions on that? I have one more thing if you want me to finish. We can look back. And you can probably better speak to this since you're on the board. There was a breach at ARC. Our business services is, they're still there. He called me before the meeting Alex did. They spent the day there manually doing payroll. They finished Hibbing's. They were starting to work on Chisholm. They have it booked till 7:00 PM tonight and all day tomorrow. We don't know all the details of the breach, other than that they found the source of the encrypted file. They don't know if it has been pulled apart or breached once they encrypted and locked them down, but they have forensics looking into it. That's my best I can do nerding out on these technical terms that were shared with me. But once they officially figure out what it is, then they'll take next steps and work through their legal team. Something similar to this happened on a previous site, and it actually was a breach through one of the papers, either Minneapolis or St. Paul. So, any member that had a login there, they got in the back door there, and then were able to breach all of the data of the school district. So, they offered two years and a third year at half price to purchase like Norton Spiner or something like that. So, they haven't quite gotten everything back to snuff. They're working on it. I was assured that employees will be paid on the 15th, but it is manual work that they're having to do to make this happen.
So, the FBI is involved, and there is a ransom note. And the ARC board has authorized the chief executive officer to pay up to a certain amount. We haven't gotten to that yet. But I will say this, for the ARC staff, they've been there 12 to 16 hours a day, every day.
Including this past weekend.
And the whole thing, and they're putting in yeoman's work, and I applaud them, and they're a good group of people. But it's just, you know, it happens over the weekend, and then you come in, and here it is, you know. But again, they're on top of things. They're enlisting all the help that they can get. They have legal. They have all of those things that are in place, and I think they were gonna send a message to superintendents about getting paid. And hopefully they've done that. I don't know. But they're keeping their board apprised of everything, and it seems to be going along, and Cindy Lee is doing a great job of organizing it, you know, so.
And they did ask for a grace period when they first found out. Superintendents knew earlier in the week, but since it was an ongoing investigation, they wanted some time so that they could be sure of what the issue is, be sure of what they needed to do for next steps. And then we released the information to the district to let them know. And then they formulated a plan so that they could make sure they could get in and get folks paid.
So, someone is actually saying, you better give us this money, or we will steal your data.
Ransom.
Put it on the dark web.
Yeah. Terrible.
Isn't that sad?
I feel like they need to do a better job of trying to prosecute them.
So, we did meet last Friday as admin team, and I did bring up to Joe Phillips about we're due to get a two-step authentication by fall, and I think we're gonna try to play around with that starting June 1st to move it up a little bit. He's ready for it, so. We'll be taking some steps on our end to make sure that we have another layer of protection. And it actually, our insurance is gonna require it come fall, so.
So, they have taken care of Hibbing's portion already?
Yes. When he called me about hour and a half ago, they had finished that, and they just started Chisholm. He said they're gonna try to stay there until around 7:00, and then if they had to come back the next day, they had to work all day. But it's a manual system that they're having to do by hand.
And I don't even know where to start. And that's number one, for ransom, for us to pay ransom, ridiculous. Number two, I understand that the Hibbing School District is much larger than ours, but it seems to me it's something that you'd be able to handle at the same time. And number three, where were those protections? Why weren't those protections in place in the program beforehand? But, and I know that you guys can't answer that. These are...
And I think we'll learn a lot more in the near future, and we'll share as we do. I don't know how manual manual is on this, and that's another thing I'll wait to learn more about, so.
Check comes ahead for it.
Well, originally, they were talking about that, but they did figure out a way to do electronic deposits, so.
It's such, it's such a terrible news to people. They think that their data's gonna be breached, you know. And they get more sophisticated all the time.
And that's everybody who's dealing with the district, including school boards, vendors, you know, the list goes on.
Beneficiaries.
Beneficiaries.
Those layers. Any other questions?
Just a question about the possible business office candidate. So, is that somebody that will be training under Alex or under Kristen or?
And ARC, hopefully, once they stabilize. Yes, so I'll...
And you think Alex will still be with us till June?
Yes.
Okay. Got you. Okay.
And we have office space for them now, correct?
Current? Yes.
So, I guess, as for the office space situation, I guess my understanding when we were going through and you weren't part of it, because you weren't the superintendent at that point, but one of our biggest things when we sold this to the city and we went out to the voters and we talked about this, you know, keeping it one campus, one home, keeping us all together. I mean, is there ways to look at trying to do that? You know, because again, like, you listed off a few people, but who would that be? Because I mean, technically, you know, our secretary should be in the building, our principal should be in the building. I think it's good for even, my personal opinion, I think it's good for a superintendent to be in the building so that you're here, you see what's going on, and you're involved like you have been, because you are the face of the district, and I think the kids recognize who you are because they see you. And so, when you mention, you know, Mr. Norman, they know who you are, and I think that's a good thing, and that kind of shows that, you know, one campus, that family feel that we were, you know, looking at getting when we started the initial plan.
Well, so, my question, I'm sorry, is about the bus garage itself. Now, I mean, that never even became priority. So, I'm curious why all of a sudden the bus garage is up. Is it more about needing more office space, or is it more about, yeah, the bus barn has to be replaced eventually, but I thought that we had time.
Right.
So, that too was set to get demoed in 2025. It is set up where we have to custom build our buses to fit. It scored the lowest on the rating scale of all buildings. When you first did your round robin, it was your number one priority. But then the more you learned, and the idea was to keep the focus on kids and try to cut away from kids. With the $32 million cap, that's what went by the wayside. Some things about it are, the roof is not structurally designed to hold the snow load and the weather load that we have. The last wind damage we had, we had folks get up and do some temporary repairs. They gave a rough estimate of around 400 K to replace the roof. Don't want to throw bad money at something if we can avoid that. There is a cost when we custom ordered buses. It was supposed to be raised so that we could provide additional parking, which we're going to be shrinking that footprint of. If we were looking at office spaces, it would most likely be folks not involved per se in day-to-day. The reason this was an attractive option, it's four blocks away. It's not like, it's half, not even halfway to the Von. It would fit all of our space needs for office spaces. It would fit all of our buses and our plows and our mowers and all the other vehicles and Suburbans and transport vans that we have. And he's right. Chisholm has a very tight footprint in what they have for parcels available, and there is just nothing out there.
Yeah, but how do we, how do we do that? Go about that? I mean, do we really wanna step on the toes of the city where they obviously have had their plans? I mean, I just, I don't know that.
Well, it seems unlikely to go anywhere, really, I guess. I think we probably just need to put our heads together and do a working session and try to come up with some other ideas.
Well, it seems a little odd to me that he's offering another piece of property in the, in the Industrial Park, which would be more of a prime piece of property, which if we or the school district took it, it would become tax exempt.
Correct.
And you're talking about a parcel, and that's what I was looking at on my phone, Mr. Chair. Another parcel that's down there that's already in tax arrears, and they're not getting dime one, so.
That's why we should have, I mean, I personally think we should all be included for one thing, and I think that we have to have a working session. I mean, we have to work together, and that is, for me, the bottom line. I mean, I just really believe that that is just something that with the city and us, we have got to figure something out where it's gonna work.
So, I could probably shed a little bit of light of how we got to this point. So, when it was on the market and for sale, both the city and the school district looked at it, just to see, would it even fit our needs? And this was well over a year ago. In a joint council meeting with the board, they shared they were pursuing it. We kind of took a backseat to that. What happened, it is not on the market anymore, and the owner personally called me and said, would you be interested? And I said, I don't make that call, but before we do anything, I need architects to take a look, and I need Ingenza to take a look because we need to know, is the slab gonna support it, or the door size is large enough? Is the footprint big enough? And I need folks a lot smarter than me in on that conversation. And so, was willing to set up a meeting, and it happened to be when they were up here working with our staff on getting feedback. So, we did go there and take a look. They did mock up a potential design. We did measurements. We had facilities and grounds, transportation, myself, ARI, and a number of folks from, from ARI and a number of folks from Ingenza that did a walkthrough. And since it got rezoned, before we could even take another step, I simply went to the council and all I asked, and very simply, and Bob and Mike were there. I said, all we're asking is, could the city please take the barrier away of how it is zoned so we can pursue it? If we could pursue it, it'd take about 30 days to get numbers put together to see if it's even a viable option. If it's not worth pursuing or worthy of bringing to the board as an option, it would basically fizzle out on its own. And so, that was the purpose of going there to say, can we at least explore it, get information, and get back to you? If that's gonna be a hurdle, it's a non-starter. So, we were just asking if they could give us a grace period to get some information, bring it to you, get back to them. That was the conversation.
Well, they said they just rezoned it. And that building sat there for how long? Haven't done a thing. They haven't approached anybody, haven't done anything. Now, all of a sudden, it's a big deal.
I thought it was part of their 2020 comprehensive plan, the rezoning. I thought that's when they announced it in 2020, but I, I'm not on the council, and I don't pay attention to what I don't have to, you know. But what about the Von, since that is probably not something we could ever sell? Is that an option? I mean, obviously, I know it's on spring or whatever, but...
Sure. So, I do think it's a property that you could sell. If I were to advise the board, I would advise a very short timeframe to put it on the market. See if you have any changes.
That there's treaty problems that we could, or...
The treaty just says that in, it is zoned for that purpose. So, that's for a township purpose. Section 16 and townships. Problem with it is, you don't want to leave a building because you need to heat it, you need to secure it. You've got boilers that run. You need to keep power to it. Abandoned buildings get trapped, and that's...
That is built on must cake.
Yes, and it's, but if in 30 days, 60 days, 90, whatever the board may decide if that's what they want to pursue, at the end of that time, if they don't find an interested party, the plans in the, in Gensa Works were to raise it. So, it was to level the building.
There was one more thing that was brought up through all of our talks, and I don't know if that, you discussed that with the city, but they were gonna build the building. We were possibly gonna rent some space.
So, he did mention that. So, when we, I started working with Kristen on some of this just to see monies and how this all works. She had shared that one of the issues is, if you lease levy, you have to own the parcel. And so, a joint partnership wouldn't work in that sense. The other thing was, and I might get this wrong in how they framed it, their public works building or their, remember the name of the, they used two names for it.
I know it was City Services Building.
City Services, one of the two. Stephanie Scraba had mentioned per stall costs, and then changing the plan costs were to the moon. So, that was the first option we explored. The second was to jointly build something, and by saying jointly, we would have had our own, but we would have had maybe a shared wash stall. They're planning on moving the pumps. I found out today it would be five plus years before the pumps got moved. So, we have explored those things. We still have a need. And I'll do whatever the board chooses. If we need to have a working session to discuss, we can. I am planning on going as of now to the March 6 meeting. The mayor is on that board. I'm assuming we will get turned down. There is an appeal process that will go to the council. And some of the things that are positives for the city are, we're very good tenants. We keep our properties clean and well-maintained. Right now, it's in dire need of a facelift and a cleanup. We pay our bills.
Well, one of the things too, that everybody looks at the state, IRRV, whomever that you're asking for dollars, are you working on a joint project with another public entity? And if you are, it looks favorable in the lender's eyes, collaboration.
So, there's only three or four areas you can lease levy for as a school district, and it's... So there's only three or four areas you can lease levy for as a school district and it's a hockey rink, it's an ALC, it's a bus barn, it's um, there's four, I've got three off the top of my head.
Athletic.
Yeah, um, certain, certain facilities.
You can lease levy for the.
Certain athletic facilities, yes. And if you're in a railroad, they were able to do that for a pool. Um, it's only specified to that one area of the state. Um, anyway, uh, that would be an avenue that you would, you would have to look at in order to fund something like this. So if you do lease levy, you do have to be the owner of it, is what I was, what we'll share with you.
Because.
I don't know. I, because city leases a space with the township a bulk. And their garage sits some firefighting equipment.
Yeah, well, we leased levy for that building that we don't wanna use anymore.
Correct.
Because we don't own these deals.
That was for the athletic facilities as a whole.
Right, I'm, but, but, my, my, my forgetting what it's called, you know, the, do they change? Oh, I feel that one.
Thank you. I'm like, what are you talking about? Yeah, I feel that one's particularly bad stuff.
And we have explored conversations um, possibly using a different facility over there as well. And that's at the beginning level. Go ahead.
And the original talks with the city as far as looking at, um, sharing that space in line was only for four buses. Size building for four buses or this offers the, you know, the footprint for all of our vehicles if needed. So that was more of an option. So looking at the cost, new versus renovation was a significant savings, so. So that's one reason why we're exploring that option.
So the next step is a planning and zoning meeting. And that's about, that's where we're at.
Right, because it doesn't, it doesn't pay to waste any time.
Correct, March sixth, um, maybe four P M off the top of my head.
Yeah.
Can I just request of the school board member from when you do have public meetings, letting us know prior to that you're going so that we're not on the side of the next day about the meetings? Cause I, I received a couple of calls the next day. So, and I didn't at first really know what was going on, so it's hard to answer questions or.
Sure, so as a realtor.
Yep.
Transactions are normally confidential.
Mm-hmm.
I did not share any information on the parcel. I did not share any information on the site, which came from the mayor like it did tonight. Um, we weren't even at that stage. And so I just wanted to see, are you willing to let us explore? That was the only question. That's literally what I asked.
Was the paper there for that meeting?
Yes, they were.
That one be out, um, Wednesday, I imagine, if she reports anything on it. Hmm.
She will.
And she will, kind of, sure. It's a job.
Yes.
What she's here to do, you guys.
Okay, anything else, anything else for Adrian?
I think.
Okay, I guess enough. Um, Mike has a report.
Good evening, everybody.
You stealing your vendor again?
No, not too bad tonight, so. I'm just kidding. So I gave you guys some pictures, uh, just looking at some of the work that uh, uh, got completed very recently on the North Wall, uh, Parrot Road in Delphi. Um, as some of you may have seen over the last couple of years, or, or so that um, the middle wall was kind of deteriorating and had a big crack running through it. Um, so I had a contractor come in and do the masonry work there. And this is a couple of different stages of that progress there. And it looks a little bit grainy because it's blown up, but uh, you can kinda see the, the product. You can see one uh area on the third page, um, where you kinda dug a little deeper on one of the cracks there. Ended up filling that back in. And then once that was all um, ready to go, then we had our guys, uh, Ryan, uh, uh, do the painting. So they matched up the paint and got that to him and, and uh, um, turned out really nice. So.
It was kind of really nice.
Yeah, the last, the last page has, you know, there again, we still have a couple of little areas that we're working on, so. So the contractor's back actually now, um, doing just a couple of small areas. Um, they didn't have time for when he was here the first time around, uh, up on that upper balcony, but it's not longer for the first one of the balcony, or the first level of the balcony now. Working still on my north wall directly below, um, through this damage structure, I'll be through, so. So we're getting that, uh, taken care of and we should have that completed here before the next event, so. And then they'll be ready to go for homecoming there for uh, uh, graduation for those, for the concerts, so, yeah.
And that was all because of the outside.
Well, this, this is all dry, so this is all rainwater that had happened before I came.
Right, right.
I think this was drying, so.
Because of those gutters or, yeah.
Yeah, and I thought maybe it was still leaking, so we, we did confirm that um, there was no more water coming before we started this work there, so.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And not to say something could happen, but uh, um, when we did dive in there, everything was dry, there was no, you know, releasing of water or anything like that. And I just felt like, oh, dude, um, on the, on the, on the corner there, still we had repaired all of that as well, so. Um, so yeah, and what hopefully for the work that was done prior to beginning here and on this, we should be, uh, good for a few more years. Um, so unfortunately though, on the, um, the south side now, on the hallway headed out towards door five, towards the bus garage, uh, there was an existing leak from years past and had been repaired. It came back again with the freeze thaw that we've been having. You get puddles of water and then just like a nice dam, it's creeping up and it's finding a way in. And so, uh, we guys were willing to try and shovel that corner out again, but um, just, we know where at least it's coming uh, from, um, and it's in an area that we can contain or catch it, so it's not, you can go down on walls, unfortunately, it's going through the ceiling of that hallway, so.
The carpet holes works great.
Yeah, yeah, so. Um, so still wanting to come with that, um, and then looking at replacing a spotlight. Um, so last, we still have a, a spare bulb left, but I cannot get uh, light bulbs anymore for our spot, spotlight. Um, you know, uh, versus Jason.
The portable one?
The big, the big one that's on the tripod that sits off the side, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, the portable one, okay.
Yeah, the portable one, yeah, so. Um, other than through eBay and trying to find out, you know, getting a bulb that way and then does it kinda work if you buy it? You know, eBay, so we're currently trying to, we're trying, pricing models out to bring that, uh, to your attention. We'll see where that comes in at. Um, and then we got new, new concert shells. And so the guys are assembling those and starting to get those up and behind the, uh, backstage. So that's kind of the out of coin news, uh, that we have going on. Um, tomorrow I'll have a, um, a meeting scheduled with Power Takeoff. They're uh, part of uh, Rebates, uh, with Minnesota Power. And so I'll be meeting with them just to kinda set some stuff up and see where our energy usage is and see if there's any, any places that we can look at saving. And then the following day, I'm gonna be doing a tour with Minnesota Power and thanks to Larry Fullstead, uh, uh, giving me in touch with their Minnesota Powers contact, uh, coming up. And we're doing a site tour, yes, there again, seeing what we have now and then be able to, uh, see what we have for, for our new building and what, what we're gonna be putting in there. And then along with that, ARI is coming tomorrow with their design team to kind of lock the tunnels again a little bit before we, which was what we wanted is to boot on the ground before they actually start designing, so they can hopefully get it done right the first time, so. It starts connecting all the, all the toning and everything that way. Um, so we're sending in some, uh, boiler issues, um, at the Von again. Uh, it'll leak, um, in the pipes, that boiler is down. We had a, uh, site glass break, but we got that boiler up and running, so we, one of the two, I mean, there, we had a module, a module, uh, on the board go down on boiler here, so we have three of the four running in this bill. Um, let's see, been talking with several reps, uh, as far as bus GPS and radio communications. So um, we're just kinda going through early stages there of finding out what might be the best, um, for our situation up here and then giving some pricing, uh, what that would entail. So that we'd be able to track the buses where they're at, uh, real time. We would not give all that information out to the parents, they would still point a contact through Brian and then, you know, if there was an issue. But if there was an issue, we'd be able to pinpoint where those buses are a lot easier. And then also just upgrading our, our, uh, base stations and such to, uh, portable radio, which in emergency, we could take that and go. We wouldn't be tied to the wall with that. So in the secretary's offices and so on, we could take that and go and still have communications with our buses, so. Um, working on getting quotes on the bathroom carpet replacement. So for next year, kind of planning ahead, as that carpet is now twenty-four years old and it's gone through uh, prior flood and everything there and we're starting to get some, uh, framing on the, on the step downs and which becomes a tripping hazard, so.
You know, I have a question about that, about the carpet. Why, I mean, why carpet, why couldn't they use like a rubber, like a rubber floor or, you know, cause I know it's sound. I realize that's a good, the sound.
That's a big part of it, you know, and then a little bit of traction when you're stepping up and stepping down, so that provides some safety that way. Uh, sanitary, you know, would be better with a.
Rubber, that's why I, one, I always ask.
So.
You do get bids on both.
So I'm working, I'm working on a couple of different things with that, so not just regular rubber type carpet, but also carpet tile. So that could be replaced a little bit easier versus having to rip up the whole.
Yeah, I mean, those kids, I mean, everything, they blow and they dump their spit in that carpet and I always said.
She's for that side of the lane.
I don't think it's rubber, I mean, it's like a weight room.
A weight room.
Open their mouths.
It's so easy to keep clean.
Oh, ridiculous.
So, yeah, it's, there's some options there, but starting, starting with this one.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's. Whores.
Yeah.
And then I A is coming on Thursday, they're wanting to test it, so.
Well, they haven't done that yet.
No, so it's sixteenth, it was a little ways out, so it's finally coming up here on Thursday. So and then with just conferences going on, it'll be a little easier for the, you know, working out of the areas, so.
I feel that, Karen.
Yeah, what's going on, yes.
That's okay, that's good, they'll, they'll know that you're keeping their kids safe.
Anything else, Mike?
Nope, any other questions?
Questions?
Thank you, thank you.
I think, um, that last comm system meeting isn't until the first week in March.
Right.
So you won't, you won't get the information at the next meeting, it will be the March meeting.
Yes, yeah. Uh, one other thing too, uh, Mark had brought up as far as looking at, uh, gets dry erase, uh, desks or tables down at the Von, and so I had to get some information. And as soon as I can free up a guy, we're gonna try and, uh, do one of those half empty tables. And there's two of them that I actually like to have done, so.
What they are is just up here in their, in their bedrooms, their dry erase, where the kids take the dry erase markers and they can do their math.
Oh, thanks.
Right on there. And, and I'll tell you, just in my experience, those kids seem to get more involved if they can write on a table versus a piece of paper. So I asked Mike to check in to see if we could do something like that down at the Von, yeah.
Since we're having a very, many, we did go to a little cheaper option of availability and, and adding that, so it's just matter of, uh, getting that prepped and, and.
My previous site, the special ed rooms and the math rooms all had that on the tables and then I helped him to make sure he got the right product, yeah.
So we're gonna give it a whirl.
That was trial and error for us, so.
Yeah, well, it must, it must be kind of fun, cause there are some teachers that require them in the list. There's a weight course, so you have to buy a separate one, you have to like put in your desk and all that stuff, the weight course or whatever. Like, I don't remember if it was that fourth day or something, maybe that they got their own, but you just had, it was a weight course.
That's what I used to say too when I was the custodian, I said, why don't we have desks that we just attach paper? Just like, you know, like when you go, right, you just grace car drive, you rip off your, you just rip it off and go on to the, you know, then they're writing right there, they're not actually taking out paper or nothing, but I, cause obviously I've cleaned a lot of desks and theirs are all out of writing. So I used to say, why don't we just get paper and then they can just rip that paper off?
We think of one of those stupid little.
Uh, Mark?
That little janitors desk and tangled together the edges.
Oh, you're like, it's all written on the desk. Always, you always see kids and, and they're like this.
It's so obvious.
Like writing their memoirs.
Yeah, let me go.
Nobody sees them, nobody sees them.
No, nobody can see.
Okay, very good.
And they usually sign their name.
Okay, thank you, Mike. The item six is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting. Comes payable for the month of January two thousand twenty-three in the amount of seven hundred thirty-six thousand eight hundred twenty dollars and fifty cents. Payrolls for the month of January twenty twenty-three in the amount of six hundred and three thousand dollars, uh, six hundred and three thousand one hundred and seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. And electronic fund transfers for the month of January twenty twenty-three in the amount of one million twenty-one thousand eight hundred eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. Motion by Shelley, is there a support?
Support.
Or by Cindy. Comments or questions on the consent agenda?
Electronic fund transfer, is this what it is? Oh, okay. That's what I thought.
That's the first time we've seen that.
And yeah, usually just give the packet of those stuff.
Yeah. Okay, do we have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Under personnel, item eight is a motion to approve the hiring of Travis Vaki to job number one ninety-four, Level Two Assistant Boys Baseball Coach for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Is there a motion? So who? Motion by Mark.
Support.
Support by Danielle. Comments or questions?
If I could just clarify, so this was reopened and he was a late hire last year. And so it was like an interim, and so, and he did reapply for the same job that he previously had.
This doesn't look, because of no app. It's not, nobody, yeah.
Okay.
Stiff competition.
Now, we have a motion in a second to approve the hiring of Travis Vaki to Assistant Boys Baseball Coach. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B is a motion to approve the hiring of Christine Olson to job number two seventeen, Long Term Substitute to the Von Stephens Road, effective January third, first, twenty twenty-three through April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do we have a motion?
So.
Motion by Jackie, or by Mark. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to business section, item A is adopt a resolution to accept donations. And the resolutions, um, four hundred dollar donation from the Evelyn's Elk Lodge to support the high school nurses' office. Resolution accepting a donation of five hundred dollars from Evelyn's Elk Lodge to support the weight room. Resolution accepting donation of five hundred dollars from Evelyn's Elk Lodge to support the purchase of junior high baseball jerseys. Resolution accepting a donation of five hundred dollars from the Evelyn's Elk Lodge to support the high school Bull Street pride. And resolution accepting a donation of five hundred dollars from the Evelyn's Elk Lodge to support the athletic department. Do we have a motion?
So.
Motion by Shelley, support by Cindy.
Please, please, uh.
Director Satter?
Yes.
Director Rice?
Yes.
Director Kreis?
Yes.
Director Rocky?
Yes.
Director Casey?
Yes.
Board chair, right?
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
So I did get some information that they may not operate the same way they've been doing in the past and it may look different. But they've been very generous with, with the public schools and so.
I feel like you should put out Evelyn's Elk's Lodge on the jerseys or.
Yeah, a definite thank you to them, they've been very generous.
Okay, we, we send, we send the letter?
We, we certainly can.
Each donation we get, we send out, we send out, thank you.
Good, cause that is very generous.
All I can say is that.
Okay, so under business now, we have the second reading of all of these policies. Policy number four one, equal employment opportunity. Second reading, policy four oh two, disability non-discrimination. Policy four oh three, discipline suspension and dismissal of school district employees. Policy number four oh four, employment background checks. Policy four oh five, veterans preference. Four, six. Private, public and private personnel data informed. Four, seven employee right to know exposure to hazardous substances. Policy number four, eight subpoena of a school district employee. Policy number four, nine employee publications, instruction manual material, excuse me, conventions and creations. And K is the second reading policy number four, twelve expense reimbursement and item L is the second reading of policy number eight, oh, seven health and safety. And at the next meeting, we'll have our third reading and take action on these policies. Okay, that ends our action portion of our agenda, moving on to discussion. I don't have anything, anybody have anything for discussion?
I, I just wanted to share one thing that um Brian, Mike and myself spent over an hour with the mayor prior to that meeting and had a discussion regarding the topic that he brought up. Uh when he parted ways with us, his quote was, I understand your predicament, good luck having her sell it to you.
I'm sorry, good luck what?
Having her sell it to you. Um his quote that we would have three buildings, we would actually have one campus, regardless, we would still need a bus barn, it never was gonna get connected to the new building. So that was not accurate. And he also shared that the district homes parcels within the community that they should explore putting a bus barn on. Well, we do own a park right by the police station that would fit our bus barn, so when we have a working session, we should open to all discussions.
I don't, I'm, I'm gonna touch that because I don't, I don't agree with that kind of way of being, I'm just sorry, I just don't. So anyway.
Yeah, okay. Put the talk offline, Danielle. Okay, um moving on to uh information, we have our.
Oh, is that discussion, you think, or information?
Oh, I guess.
Yes, it would be discussion, um Cindy and I reached out to Gail Gilman from the MSBA about the um. The self, uh self evaluations that we talked about doing and there's two options that we can do, one is kind of a, kind of a, just evaluate ourselves. And we had talked about, you know, you were in that meeting that there's one that's a little bit more comprehensive. Um that she would get involved and actually go through the results with us and kind of just.
And it would be an online, I mean, she'd come on, so.
She'd come via Zoom and, and meet with us at a working session or, or a meeting. Um and the first one is free, um and then the second one, I know we had talked about before, that's like a thousand ninety-five dollars, I guess.
And that was the one where she'd come, she comes and examines it and puts a big report together and, and whatnot.
So I guess we're looking for direction of what people are thinking they wanna do. Um do we follow up on the first one or the, the one where we pay for it?
Well, since we've already talked before, should we start with the first one and just get that.
I think titles and stuff and just like.
I think that's reasonable, yeah, I mean, I've never done a board self-evaluation and so I think it's the easiest one is the way to start and then. As we move forward, you know, we'll.
If we find it really useful of information, then we can always, the next time around, step, you know, step it up.
Well, we'll just have to, you know, I mean, she's the one who would, I mean, we did, I, I, I'm kind of, kind of for the second one, just because. She'd be the one leading, I mean, we can all take this evaluation and then, and then what, who understands it, who reads it, you know, who tells us.
Is it like a survey, is it like a survey?
Well, you know, it's, I, I don't know, it was like, how many questions was it saying?
Seventy, seventy-two questions or something like that.
How many did you say?
Seventy-two questions.
Seventy-two?
Yeah, it's like.
You may not live long enough to finish it.
And there's all exactly.
That does seem like a lot of questions, seventy-two questions.
I, I don't remember exactly how many it was.
The first one, it's basically like a section on conduct and ethics, um vision, structure, accountability, advocacy and communi-. Go out to one level, I think, communication and um. You know, you can just go on the MSBA site and just print it out there, whereas the other one is more of a guided kind of a situation.
Yeah, we do it and then she guides us through it and lets us know where we need our work and where, you know.
So if we did the first, first evaluation, we would take it, send it to her?
No, this first one is just kind of, we do it ourselves.
We do our own, it's just all by ourselves, you know.
But it's free.
But it's free.
Um yeah, the second one is a more comprehensive, twenty-seven pages in length.
Oh.
Um it's only available at um. A board superintendent team in-service, which would be facilitated by her and it'll last anywhere from two to three hours. And allows a board to see uh disaggregated data for each one of the seventy questions of the evaluation. Part of the in-service would be a spent, uh spent identifying possible board superintendent team goals that align with the district's goals as outlined in your strategic plan. It also includes a written summary of the in-service, which can be used as team continues through their own discussions to identify board superintendent team goals.
That's very comprehensive.
Yeah, I guess.
So, so the question is, if we, let's for argument, we use the second survey. We take it online and we send it to Gail, correct?
Yes.
And then she puts it all together and then we have like a meeting with her here or.
Or via Zoom, yeah.
Zoom or whatever and she goes over it and that's a thousand and.
Change, yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, really even the first one, maybe it would, you know, call, you know, some of those questions and whatnot would call attention to, you know, what, a lot of us are probably just thinking in our own heads.
Well, I can't think of anyone off the top of my head, but there are some people that have served on, you know. You know, councils and committees and if we really wanted someone to maybe just like be a neutral to review and discuss, we probably could do, get someone to volunteer to do that.
Yeah, we have.
You know what I mean, like, I really think there's, I mean, there's people I, cause I've. On several boards that, you know, tend to like be really, you know, just understand like, you know, like how. Which would happen if you really wanted, we could take those at some point, you know, we could have, maybe I want to just provide us with feedback if that was necessary. I think just the process of the questions will probably get people to like have some, you know, self-reflection on, oh, you know, oh, that's a good, that's a good point, that's something I should think about when I'm at a meeting or whatever.
Right.
I could go my whole life without taking another survey, guys, just tell me.
You don't have two, three hours there.
So, well, so I'll do number one, two, three hours seems like a big.
Three for number one and just all you've got and then you need to leave, there's another two thousand dollars.
That's true. And we do have, we do have a cohesive group that we respect each other, you know, on a level, so I think.
Well, and what, should we just like get the questions, print them off and then just, you know, get them or email them to or however you want and print them off. Give them to you guys and then, you know, we can just like.
We could schedule them to a working session or.
To talk about.
I'll follow up with Gail and then just find out what the steps are for the next, that's first, to get that.
Yeah, to do that first part, okay, that's good, that's what we wanted to know.
Okay, any, when we can expect this explosion? A week or so maybe, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever you guys hear off there.
Find a nice meeting, maybe you could.
Yeah.
Act it in order.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Shelley and Cindy.
Okay, um under information, we have our food shop donation appreciation letters and um. You know, dollars and feet, always appreciative from the people who are in need. Um and then this next one here is a staff mental health survey that was done by Aubrey Hoover, uh from the Northeast Service Co-op. I hate saying this, what are we gonna do with this? Should have asked the question before, but I didn't, do we know what we're gonna be able to do with it?
So, yeah, Aubrey in on our professional development day, she came in for an hour, uh it was a voluntary meeting, those who wanted to attend, she actually had a really large turnout. She had a very healthy discussion with folks, um we have a coordinator now for our wellness. Uh planning and that is Travis Vaki and he'll be working with Aubrey on this. Our survey I was shared is nearly identical to everyone in the region that took the survey. We have provided a couple of uh things already in the process, we provided a one-hour breakfast on P E day, so folks could just sit and chat and um debrief. Then we also offered an hour lunch because we did pretty intense Alice training that requires um also a little de-escalation for folks um when it comes to that. Travis is gonna spearhead this and there's been all, all sorts of different ideas. We have our Friday admin team meetings where he's gonna be coming and presenting some of these options as we move forward. Not by any means trying to downplay it from what it says, speaks volumes of where everyone's at um right now. Getting through COVID has been a, a very large challenge for folks and, and it shows what they're saying and we'll continue to take steps to uh. Work with our staff to keep improving their um mental health and working conditions.
Well, I think this is great just because people feel they're being listened to and that's the positive thing, you know, it just, people are being heard and that's, I think, is great.
And we did go over it with our admin team at a recent uh Friday admin team meeting, so the whole team was privy to this information as well.
Okay, um any questions on this for Adrian, this is fabulous stuff.
Yeah, she, she's got some great ideas uh and, and looking forward to some of those that are coming.
Aubrey has a great program going over at the co-op and she's branching out and she's working with the metro co-op. Who has more access to mental health facilities and practitioners and things like that, so she's, she's moving this thing statewide and she's in charge of the whole thing and that's, she's terrific, she really is.
I just have one more question, this is for you Adrian, just wondering, um for reports, I, I miss that you don't put your report in our packet.
Oh, I can do that. I mean, I type it up anyway.
I mean, it's just sometimes I put notes on it.
You know, you can. Well, yeah, then if, you know, we have questions.
Mike can do the same.
Yeah, I mean, to have a little, um, so we know what, what's coming, so we know what we can ask and, you know, kind of.
Not, not a problem.
I mean, I don't wanna add to anybody's, you know, workload either, but I always see you come with your.
That certainly can.
That'd be great.
Well, Mike has a complaint, go ahead.
Sorry, I do have one more thing that I didn't uh have on my initial report was, did you put her down a piece of paper? I was thinking of that and, and looking for Adrian to set the Alice training, so um. We did our first round of Alice training, um with the teachers here, we could have both and uh. We didn't wanna roll that out to tell you how to secure entrance and so now with that, people said, I'll study the law. We also um got over a PowerPoint with both uh elementary uh E through six and then the seventh through twelve, because there's a little bit of uh difference. As far as doing the students at a young age and so uh we talked about that, uh through that training and then we did some hands-on. And some good feedback from the teachers, they enjoyed the, the hands-on, um teachers and parents were invited to come to that as well. Um and so we had a great, uh really good turnout for that, uh the next steps will be rolling out to the parents and so we're putting that together and then. Uh after that gets put out to them first, then we'll start, you know, taking it further with the students and in our uh drills and so on and so forth. So we're trying to systematically roll this out, um and then we'll have law enforcement here helping us out with, with those sort of trainings as well, so.
And our safety manuals are, yeah, near the finish line to also roll out.
Is there a safety meeting scheduled for?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
So we're kind of waiting for the final reading of the policies and then we can roll out the committee after that, so.
I mean, I just wanted to add one thing, I did ask Alex to pull some numbers and he said that um in a calendar year, the bus barns cost only eighty thousand dollars.
Okay.
You really like the colored paper?
I like colored paper.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm glad you're using it.
Everywhere, this is why do I have one?
Okay, come for a policy meeting and that result, you have access.
Now you're responsible for another.
Okay.
Just don't tell anybody you have one. Can you go and get my gift now?
Just a couple of other things, we have our enrollment numbers in our packet and then uh our twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two school board meetings, thanks to Director Soder, she caught. The May meetings, we had the May twenty, the last meeting in May was scheduled for the twenty-ninth.
What is it?
Friday.
And, and it is.
No, it was actually Tuesday, that following Tuesday, but it was a, it went to follow our second and fourth Monday.
Yeah, so that meeting is on the twenty-second, which happens to be the fourth Monday of the month, so thank you Danielle for catching that and uh. With all of that being said, a motion to adjourn is in order.
I will make the motion.
同意.
Danielle, by Shelley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, it is six oh four.